It is Tuesday, 1 October 2019 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. I have a short invocation. Lord, there are so many times when we have burdens almost too heavy to bear. Our nation faces hardships and pain. We need your wisdom and help in all areas. Strengthen us as a people and lead us in the way that will bring honor and glory to you, Lord. You have promised if we humble ourselves and seek your face and pray, you will heal our land. May we forever be humble in your sight and may we experience your blessing in the midst of our great need. Roll call, please.
Trustees head?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Matt?
Eric?
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Watkins?
Here.
Trustees Ice?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the Regular Board Meeting of 3 September 2019.
I move to approve the September 3, 2019, board minutes as printed.
Thank you. Kathy, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lori. Is there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes is approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item three is comments from the floor. This is the opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topic, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And everybody I see in the audience today is on the agenda, so we'll go to item four, which is a library report by our librarian, Tina Norris. Welcome, Tina.
Well, thank you for having me and allowing me this opportunity to provide you with an update. And I would be willing to answer any questions that you might have. This year, through September 30, yesterday, the library visits are up 7% over last year. 10.5% increase in our library card applications. Programming attendance is up 35%, with the average attendance per program up 57%. So, we're actually having less programs, but they are higher quality. We're really doing a better job at reaching our target audiences. Some of the things that we've been doing, we're doing early literacy storytimes, and those are implemented by trained library staff. And we do sensory storytimes, STEM storytimes, and music and movement. So, we're kind of covering the bases there, and the public is really appreciating those. For school-age programming, we have done STEM learning. So, we had a space camp for summer, our summer reading program. We saw a huge increase. We kind of shook things up, and we had some summer camps. So, they were week-long, two-hour camps in the middle of the day. We did a writers' camp, a history camp, a coding camp, a space camp, and I think there was one more. But I can't remember it, sorry. But we also have a partnership with Kiwanis, and we started a community service club. We have a K kids' club that meets twice a month at the library. And that is for older elementary and tweens, so that age group. And we have a really great turnout. It's been amazing. And they're doing service projects in the community. Some other activities, we have had coding and computer programs for those school-age kids. We've done some 3D printing classes, and those have been big hits. For the teens, we do teen and tween nights with crafts, trivia games, and activities. And with the teens, of course, there's food. Want kids to come? There has to be food. So, we also did an adulting series for that age group. Things that maybe they're not learning in school, but we did a finance, how to balance a checkbook, how to make a budget, how to write a check. Because apparently, that's a thing these days. So, we taught them how to write checks. We did some dorm room cooking, and we did a everything you need to know about car maintenance. So, how to check the oil, how to check the fluids, how to change windshield wipers, checking the air in the tires. So, those were really, parents were the most happy with us, but I think the kids really enjoyed them too. And I think those are things that they need to know. For adults, we do our monthly craft program once a month. On a Saturday afternoon, we have a monthly book club and genealogy workshops. Those are the first Thursday, or the second Thursday, I'm sorry, of every month. And then we do programs for job seekers. We have guest speakers that come in and cover historical topics, health and wellness. We're open to any kind of program as long as it meets what our purpose is, and that is to promote literacy and lifelong learning. And we do, you know, we do background checks on people who come in, or they have to be insured. So, we're not just going to let anyone show up to do a program. We are very mindful of our community and the community we serve. We also have author presentations. A couple weeks ago, we partnered with the PIPs, and we had Michael Perry come in. So, for those programs, 91% of our programming is grant-funded. And in the last three years, the library has received $135,334 in grant funding. 96,324 of that has been through the Hudson Area Library Foundation. And they do an annual campaign, which should probably be getting mailers in the next few weeks. That'll be kicking off. They also do fundraiser events. So, in May, they celebrated the 30th anniversary of the foundation with a Gatsby gala. On October 19, they are having another fundraiser. It's Hogwarts After Hours. This is the second annual Hogwarts event. And those tickets, if anyone's interested, are available. You can find that on the library website. The Friends also provide support to the library through their semi-annual book sales. That just wrapped up, and so we have, the next one will be in the spring again, and the onsite bookstore. The other thing I wanted to do was clarify just a few things that were mentioned in the report in September to the village. The library is not undergoing a renovation. We're not planning a renovation. We have not hired a consultant. There are space issues. That's a given. We're limited in what we can do, but what we are doing internally is looking at that space from different perspectives, and how can we use that space in the most efficient way? And that's what we're doing. You know, we've reconfigured spaces in the children's area to make it more effective, but without, we've added shelving there, so we can add more books, without taking away space from family gathering areas or children's play areas. So, we're looking at how we can best use the space that we have. We're not looking at any renovation at this time. The other thing is the floor load limits. I kind of watched, and it seemed like there were some questions about that. Those were put in place when we moved into that building, the architects. Those floor load limits have been there. So, that's not something new. And the other thing I wanted to touch base on is the digital materials. That does still continue to grow, yes. But it is 16% of our circulation. 83% is physical materials. Digital is extremely costly when a library purchases a digital item. It's not like if you purchased it personally, we have to have a licensing agreement. We can have that material go out to 300 users, and then it disappears, and we don't have it anymore. It also costs $60 to $80 per item, whereas we can purchase a book for about $15. So, it's really, it is a matter of cost. And the other thing is, and this is a new thing, Macmillan Publishing and some of the other publishers are now limiting libraries to one copy for the first eight weeks after an item comes out. So, that's going to be an access issue. So, I just kind of wanted to clarify those things and make sure everyone understood that, you know, it's not, we're not planning a renovation. We're very mindful of our money. You could ask my husband. I watch every penny. I am frugal that way. I just, you know, I think it's the taxpayers' dollars. I have to be very careful and mindful of how it's spent. I think that's important. I think that's part of my job, is to get the most bang for the buck. And I know you're getting ready to do budgets. I want to thank you for considering our request. So, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina. And you have, I know you have done a great job. I know the numbers for Hudson Library are better than just about everyone in the state. So, we appreciate your being fiscally responsible. Much appreciated.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is amended Class Parent B/ Parent Class B liquor license for extended premises Malloo Inn Fall Motorcycle Run on 12 October. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to extend the Malloo's?
Sure.
Move that the Class B/ Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Malloo Inn be temporarily amended for an event taking place October 12, 2019. Can I say with all of our normal conditions, or?
No, just read it.
With the following conditions. Number one, possession of open containers of alcohol outside of the establishment shall remain within Malloo Inn parking lot and blocked-off street area for event, Wisconsin Street North from Third Street North to Sixth Street North. Number two, use of outside area only with specific permission of Village Board for each particular date and event. The Saturday, October 12, 2019 event to be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Item three, two North Hudson Police Officers and three St. Croix County deputies to be on duty during the hours of the event at the owner's expense, to be billed to the owner by the village. Number four, owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Number five, Wisconsin Street North from Sixth Street North to Third Street North to be closed to through traffic from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM with an open corridor for emergency vehicles maintained. Surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the village. Actual time of detour route are at the discretion of the commanding NHPD officer on scene. Item six, payment for village services must be paid within 30 days after the event.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there any further discussion? Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the extended premises for the Malloo Inn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item six is new business from the border staff. President's comments, I don't have much, but I would like to remind folks is, you know, it's great to see everybody out walking, getting their exercises in the village, but with the shortness of the sunlight now, it's getting harder and harder to see people if they don't dress in bright colors and they're walking down the streets. So, I mean, we love to see out walking. Let's just make sure that you can be seen when you're out walking. Melissa?
The governor had set the dates for the special election for the 7th Congressional District. They were for Monday, January 27, 2020. And if a primary would be needed, this was going to occur on Monday, December 30, 2019. However, the dates are expected to be moved due to a conflict between state and federal law, and the new dates have not been announced as of yet. This all came to light, I believe, yesterday or this morning, so it's fairly new. And then also, preparation for the 2020 census has begun. Information has been posted on the village website under News and Events, and will be updated throughout the census cycle. There are census job opportunities available, and the information is also posted on the website and the bulletin board in the village hall lobby.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Item seven, Plan Commission Recommendations Chair Update. I see Michael's not here. Paul, were you, did you attend?
Yep, I was there. There was very little discussion on the proposed development. There was no objections raised, and it was recommend approval, subject to the conditions, I think, that's stated here in.
The county.
Yep.
Okay. Requested so, we would need a motion to approve the exterrial CSM, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to approve the application for 10, for a 10-lot extraterritorial subdivision from applicant Nato or Neato Development LLC located in the town of St. Joseph, PIN 030-2021-80000, with the following conditions. Number one, comments from the town of St. Joseph and the St. Croix County Planning and Zoning Department be addressed prior to signature of the final plat. Item two, developer must provide for a Village of North Hudson certificate on the final plat for the village president and village administrator/clerk to sign. Item three, provide a copy of the final signed recorded plat to the village.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy, thank you. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And item C, Ridge's Second Edition Approved Requested. Final plat is first.
Did you say Ridge's?
Yes.
Stan, can I?
Not the developers screaming yet. The final plat is first.
Final plat first.
Final plat first.
Anybody got it up?
I did not do an issue statement for this.
Stan, can I make a motion to, is it to approve the final plat? To approve the final plat for Ridge's Second Edition?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a representative here if we have questions. I mean, but if we don't have questions, we can.
No, I'm aware of it. I'm fine.
Anybody else?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the final plat for Ridge's Two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item two is developers' agreement.
Stan, can I make a motion to approve the development agreement for the Ridge's Second Edition between the Village of North Hudson and GCCI Land Planners, Inc.?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I guess one comment. We are still waiting on an amount for the oversizing the pipe from 10 inches to 12 inches to insert into the development agreement. So, it's not quite in final form yet. It's 99% in final form, and we thought we'd have the number by today, but we don't. I know Matt's been trying to get it. And the way that's going to work and the way it's set up in here is that the developer's going to put in the pipe. Once the village accepts it, we're going to put a deferred assessment or recapture on the adjoining Zappa parcel. So, when they connect, they'll be responsible for that increment, and they can pay it when they connect, or they can pay it upfront. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
But, you know, the village won't be writing a check, but they will be passing through the money when that connection is made.
Right, okay.
The only other thing that's a little bit different with this one is that there's also an agreement in here to allow the two corner lots to develop before the road's done because they are adjoining an existing paved road. So, there's, you know, emergency access and everything available there. I mean, their timeline for getting the road is pretty short anyway. I think you guys were thinking you'd have most everything done this fall yet anyway, so.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
It stops raining anyway.
Right, if the rain stops.
Matt Heeb with ACA. Thanks for having me here. Our schedule is originally to have the curb and first lift pavement in by November 15 or before, and I would say we'd still be on schedule, but I think that the material out there isn't, there's a layer of not-quite-so-wonderful material that when it gets wet, it has to dry out. So, we're waiting for it to dry after it stops raining. So, we're still hoping to, at a minimum, get gravel down, all the utilities in, gravel down before weather turns bad.
So, Matt, just so we can maybe proceed tonight, do you have any kind of idea what that number's going to be?
The original number, we had gotten numbers from upsizing from 8 to 12 inch, and I believe it was $31,000. So, if I were to venture a guess, I would guess it would be in the $20,000 range. That's my, that's my best guess right now. I tried several times today. It gets me answers, and I'm not quite there yet.
Can we make this contingent on?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing, I was thinking of, can, you know, you're comfortable like approving it with a not-to-exceed number? Doing it that way, otherwise, we can approve.
It's not going to exceed the 30.
As I say, we were focused off the $30,000, because he's already got that.
It is actually, I think, $32,000. It's not going to exceed that. It's going to go down. Otherwise, we'd, so it's not going to exceed that. I just don't have a real good idea of how much.
I think it would be close to that 20?
That'd be my guess, but I don't know.
Anybody else?
So, you're suggesting we add that to the actual motion that we, to the agreement, that we put that in?
Yeah, you know, if you're comfortable approving it tonight with that blank in there, you can approve it with, you know, a not-to-exceed number. And when, you know, Matt will have that number, I'm assuming.
Hopefully tomorrow, but I don't, I'm not counting on, because I thought today, so soon.
At that point, assuming that number's less than the not-to-exceed number, I'll plug it in the agreement and get it back to Melissa, and we can get it all signed up.
We don't want them to come back yet.
No.
So, I don't, still didn't understand how the pay thing side of this thing works. Are we paying for it upfront and then collecting from someone else?
Developers putting it at their initial cost.
Okay.
When there's a connection to the property to the east, that's when the obligation of the village to pay kicks in. But essentially, it's going to be a pass-through because it's going to be assessed against the Zappa parcel.
Okay.
So, it's just going to pass through back to the developer at that point, whether that's two years from now or 15 years from now.
Okay.
And Melissa's going to be here all 15 years and remember that.
We might have to put something else in place.
Hopefully, we'll have digitized meeting minutes that we can search.
No, we've discussed how to catch it when it happens, so.
So, we're looking for an amendment to what I already set forward, an amendment that says there's a, not a contingency?
With a cost estimate, or a cost for the oversizing not to exceed $30,000.
Okay. So, my amendment would be with a cost for the oversizing not to exceed $30,000?
No.
Is that?
Second.
Is that a rate? Is it Kathy's second?
No, there's some, it came from, the second came from that.
We hadn't had a second.
But you're dealing with the amendment now, so you need to second the amendment.
You can second the amendment.
Kirk, he seconded the amendment.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Well, all in favor of the amended motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Okay. Item eight, Personal and Finance Committee Claims Approval Requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the October 2019 non-recurring claims of $45,194.88?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, comments, or questions? Hearing none. This is a spending issue. Kathy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes.
Thank you. Item B, Animal Warden Service Contract Discussion Possible or Approval Requested.
Stan, can I make a motion to approve or to recommend contract negotiations begin with Daryl Hall to become our next animal warden for the Village of North Hudson?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there any discussion? If you look in the packet, our longtime animal warden is retiring, and a couple different folks there, and the Finance Committee looked at it, and because we haven't had much success in putting it all for RFP in the past, because there's not a lot of animal, trained animal wardens around, we thought that this would be a good choice for the village. So, we need a vote, and all in favor of the village to enter into the contract negotiations with, what was his name?
Daryl Hall.
Daryl Hall. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Keep waiting for John.
The greatest, greatest band of all time.
Next. Public Works Chair Update, Brian.
I'm catching up here. There's a lot on here. Do we actually have a statement, an issue statement on that?
For the selection of the firm?
Yeah, I'm looking for it. Is it the?
I don't believe you do, no. If you can look at your minutes, we'd have it.
Okay. Come on. All right, Stan, where is it? Stan, we, my motion would be to approve, what is that thing called again? SOQ?
Mm-hmm.
Statement of Qualifications for an SDP Urban Grant Application Process for Monroe Street.
Thank you.
And, well, we selected.
Second.
And we selected Cedar Corp. Sorry.
So, what is it?
Kevin?
Sorry. For those of us in the viewing audience who don't know what this is.
So, basically, it's for the next round of funding for the SDP, the urban grant. If you remember, we used that funding mechanism for the Wisconsin Street project. So, the app is actually due on October 15 of this month. And had to go through a selection process, and SOQ'd, I actually pick who you're going to use to do the application, to actually assist the village with that process. There was a selection committee that was put together, and that was Patrick, Brian, and Melissa, and had two quotes or two people that submitted, and it was Cooper and us. Based on their scoring system, it looks like they chose us to help you through that process, so.
We walked through a scoring system between those that had sent in an application, and basically, you concluded that Cedar Corp, well, one of the main, one of the questions on the scoring was how much experience do you have with the firm? We had zero with the other firm, and we know Cedar Corp, so that kind of weighed in heavy. And actually, we thought the presentation was just better.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Other question?
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, let's see. It's just an application, so all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, number 10, Public Safety Committee. Tim?
Stan, we have two items to bring to the board, and first is discussion and possible approval. First one is a motion to authorize the designation of the south side of the 700 through 800 blocks of Pine Street North as no parking this side of street.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Everybody saw the packet and stuff like that. Residents requested for, to make sure the emergency vehicles can get through there. So, without any further discussion, all in favor of making the south side of Pine Street North from the 700 to 800 block, no parking, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And C, handgun purchase.
Yes, Stan, thank you. Our second item is a motion to authorize the purchase of a 6, 9 millimeter, excuse me, handguns and ammunition at the trade-in of our, plus a trade-in of our 40-caliber handguns from our 2019 Police Department budget. Boy, I struggle on that one. I apologize.
It was a mouthful.
Second. I had to cough, and I couldn't get it out. So, I can say it again, but to purchase. Second. I had to cough, and I couldn't get it out. So, I can say it again, but to purchase the six handguns, nine millimeters, and in exchange for the forty caliber handguns from our two thousand and nineteen police department budget.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Excuse me.
Phil seconded.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. That's a spending, Tim?
Yes.
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 You. Okay. Number eleven, Public Welfare Committee Did Not Meet?
Correct.
How about Park Board?
Nope.
Get in, and there is, I don't believe there's anything to go into closed session before. We even heard nothing from EMS.
I just, I think you're still considering buying two ambulances.
Yeah. I heard that this week at a meeting too, so. Well, with that, item fifteen is we would be adjourned at seven thirty-one. Thank you, everyone. Hope you have a wonderful evening and a great week.